That's hilarious.
Yeah.
We're writing your page.
Now, they can't find the birth parents, though. Those records are.
We'll reconvene the meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board. I want to thank you all for coming. You're very much appreciated. We know you spent your own time to come tonight to contribute to children. We appreciate that. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board attendance? We're 100 percent here tonight. And I have asked the superintendent to say a few words as we get started.
All right. I just want to thank our audience members for attending tonight. And I know that on people's mind is the resolution on becoming a local law enforcement agency. And I want to apologize, first of all, for surprising communities with that. That was never, it's never my intent to surprise you. So what I want to tell you is that, first of all, we're not voting tonight on this. It's a first reading and a presentation of information for the board to consider. And second of all, I think it would be really helpful for us if we could do some sort of a reach out, maybe in the next week or two, before it comes back before the board in August for a decision, where we could do some listening around your concerns, make sure we have your questions answered. So I'm going to ask Alice if she would pass around a sign-in sheet where you could give us your email address, so that we could be sure that if you wanted to be invited to a community meeting around this topic, we'd have your contact information. And then the last thing is, I think there were about 12 to 14 people signed up for public testimony on agenda items. I would request that you would hold public testimony, and we move it to the non-agenda items, because that gives you a chance to listen to the presentation first. So if people are willing to do that, well, that would be, I think, a great sequence of events for the evening. If somebody still really wants to testify ahead of the presentation on the topic, that's great, too. But I thought it might sequence it a little bit better for people. So again, thank you for coming. I got to visit with a few people, and what I said was, the great thing is to have, when you have a public process, is when the public actually shows up. So we do appreciate you. And already, there were a couple of really key questions that I think were on people's mind that are important for us to consider. So with that, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Be sure to sign up with an email if you're interested in the community conversation around this, and consider going to the non-agenda item, placing the agenda for public testimony. All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is spotlights. We want to show people that we appreciate what they've done in the district.
All right. Our first spotlight will be presented by Kelly Carlisle, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, Chairperson Gross, and members of the board. I'd like to invite up Brian Anderson, Caleb Roberts, Karma Kraus, Erin Harada, and Emily Hicks from the Office of Community Relations and Communications. Tonight, we want to recognize a team that works around the clock behind the scenes to engage our employees and our community through strategic communications. It's my pleasure to welcome Brian Anderson, Caleb Roberts, Karma Kraus, Emily Hicks, and Erin Harada from our Office of Community Relations and Communications. This is the team behind our new website, our internal and external newsletters, a robust social media program, video productions, crisis communications, and more. Tonight, we honor them for their national accomplishments, recent awards from the National School Public Relations Association, or as they call it in the biz, NSPR. Their work was judged by a panel of school public relations experts and compared to submissions of school districts of all sizes from across the country. The SKPS Community Relations and Communications Department was awarded honorable mention in publications for its external e-newsletter, Monday Minutes, and in electronic media communications for its video production of McKay's Recycle 3D Team Sweeps College Competition. According to NSPR, publications are judged on graphic layout and design, writing and content, while electronic media communication is judged on professional quality, content, ease of access, and usability. SKPS previously has received the NSPR Gold Medalion Award in 2009 for its 2008 construction bond campaign. We are so thankful to our skilled employees who share their time and their talents so generously to support our district's vision and tell our story. I'd also like to give a shout out to their fearless leader, Director Lillian Govis, who's behind me here. This is a wonderful team, and we're so well-served by them. And I'm certain that we'll be back here again next year with even more to celebrate. Congratulations.
Our next award will be presented by Lillian Govis, the Director of Community Relations and Communication.
Superintendent Perry, Chair Gross, and members of the board, it is my privilege to recognize the Yes for Salem Kaiser Schools Political Action Committee tonight as a special spotlight on success. I would like to invite the committee's co-chairs, Nancy McMorris-Addicks and Mark Shipman, Campaign Manager Shannon Cocain, Deputy Director of Accion Politica Puconista Martha Sonado, and Pecun Executive Director Reyna Lopez, and the Pecun team, please come up front. Now, I know there are way more members of the Pecun team here tonight. We couldn't have knocked on all those doors without you. Also not here tonight is Kreena Lee, who is a big member of our team as well. Nancy, Mark, Martha, and team, along with their third co-chair, Lysia Hornish, and the campaign consultant Paige Richardson, who could not be here tonight, are being recognized for their extraordinary efforts in the campaign to promote the passage successfully of the district's $619.7 million bond measure, the third largest in Oregon's history. The dedicated folks that you see in front of you contributed countless hours, and seriously, countless, nearly all during their evenings and weekends, to make sure that our community knew about the real needs of our schools and how important it would be to approve the bond to benefit students across the entire district. There's really no way to adequately describe the amount of effort these people put forth in a very short amount of time. In just a few months, they organized, fundraised, created materials, attended community meetings, canvassed door to door to door to door, posted campaign signs, hosted meetings, and more to make sure that our Salem and Kaiser communities knew how important this bond is for students, both present and future. Most significantly, each of these people before you contributed not only their time and their expertise to their campaign, but also their hearts for the future of our children and education in our community. Without the efforts of these leaders and the supporters of the Yes for Salem Kaiser Public Schools Political Action Committee, I can say with certainty that the Salem Kaiser Public Schools would not be in the position it is in today, prepared to meet nearly a decade of expected enrollment growth, poised to provide more career technical education opportunities, ready to increase access to technology, and to improve the safety, security, and seismic strength of our schools. Thank you, Nancy, Mark, Martha, Shannon, and the entire Yes for Salem Kaiser Schools team for your support of our students and our schools. And I know Martha has a few people that she wanted to make sure that she recognized, so I'm going to let her come over here real fast and say a few quick words. Oh, you've got to do it here, so they can hear it on TV.
So I just wanted to say that we actually have a lot of the youth up there that will be testifying today. They worked very hard on the Yes for Salem Kaiser School bond. We knocked on 13,000 doors, so it was really hard work, but they did it because they truly cared about their communities and our kids, right? And making sure that everybody, that our kids were in safe buildings and they have as much access to the best quality education. So I'm just very proud of the entire team, but I did want to do a special shout-out to our young folks over here who dedicated a lot of time to the campaign.
Can you please stand up?
Yeah, so like, yeah, can you all please stand up, so we know who you are, so we can see your beautiful faces?
All right, y'all. The superintendent said so. You have to come up front.
That's right. Yeah. Okay, we got, we get one more picture. Okay, Kathy, one more picture, too.
Now, on our agenda, we come down to public comment. Excuse me. We'll now take public comment related to agenda items. That means the sheets that you picked up in the hall. And remember, each person has three minutes. We so much appreciate your coming, that we're just going to ask you to launch for the yellow light. When you do see the yellow light, that means it's about time to wrap up. Finish what you were saying, and go on. And if you have material that you've brought that you would like us to read, we ask that you bring 10 copies, and if you will give it to Alice at that end of the table, she will pass it out.
Since I'm the timekeeper, an important duty, when the yellow light goes on, you have one minute left just to judge, and then the red light is, time's up.
Is there anybody who was ready to testify on Agenda Item 8 that wants to go now and not wait till after the presentation? Anyone on Agenda Item 8? You want to go now? Okay, awesome. And if you'd just state your name and your city for the record.
My name is Michael Pollard, and I'm from Salem. Members of the board, I've never been here before, so I may not be following proper protocol. I looked at the resolution. I have written resolutions before, and I see the what and the why, but missing thoroughly is the how. And so, being very skeptical in these times, I asked, why now? Why do we need this now? IP 22 is now Measure 105, a measure that will be on the November ballot for us to vote on. This ballot is taking away the status of Oregon being a sanctuary state. How will the Salem Kaiser School District reconcile the fact that if this ballot passes, and God forbid, I trust and hope that Oregon voters will reject this ballot as they rejected Trump? But if it would pass, how would the Salem Kaiser School District reconcile the protection of immigrants in the school district? How would they stop ICE from taking hold of them? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else need to speak early or right now? Thank you very much.
We just have one item that's unrelated. Do we need to do that now? That one needs to go down.
We have one item, and it's on ELE Number 1. Mindy Merritt? You hear Mindy? Okay. We have action item next. And the next item, the action item, is on the agenda for approval of property purchase. We have seen this item as a first reading at our June meeting, so this is the second reading on this item. Call for a motion for approval of the.
So moved.
Second.
It's been, the motion has been made and seconded for this item. Any discussion this evening? This item is completed at second reading. Now we have what's called a consent.
Take a vote.
Oh, sorry about that. We still need to vote?
Yes.
A vote and a, or a motion and a second has been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that okay now?
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'm, this is my first night of doing this, so I get help from both sides. Okay, the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I'd move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
I wanted to pull an item, but okay.
You are or not?
I did want to, but since there's a motion made, and it's been seconded, I'll wait until we discuss.
Okay.
By Jim, seconded by Jessie.
Then, the motion has been made and seconded, that we accept the consent calary, calendar as a year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Madam Chair, I think Paul wanted some discussion on this matter.
I did. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank whoever put the packet together for including the legal services contract for this year. I've asked for it every year that I've been on the board, and this is the first year. It's actually been current and here. So thank you, whoever did that.
That was Mr. DiCapolis, I'm sure.
That was the superintendent.
And the superintendent. Okay, now we can vote? All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar as written signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar passes. The next item on our agenda is the readings. The reading, this item is a resolution presented for a first reading. Mr. Wolf, this is your item.
Excuse me. Good evening, Chair Gross, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. Tonight is the first reading for the adoption of a resolution designating Salem Kaiser School District's Safety and Risk Management Services Department as a law enforcement agency. This goes back a ways, but as far as, as part of the staff's ongoing assessment of the district's safety and security posture, recommendation is being brought forward for board consideration to designate the Safety and Risk Management Services as a law enforcement agency. Establishing the LEA or Law Enforcement Agency would allow the district to apply for access to the law enforcement data system, or LEDs, and the National Crime Information Center. This provides the district with a much more detailed ability to do background checks on staff and volunteers, and we believe gives the district better access to information that, quite frankly, we just don't have today. And it's important, we believe, for us to have access to that information because of the business that we're in, in education, particularly with the students that are involved and in our care. We also think that being designated as an LEA would allow for greater information sharing between the local agencies and access to more in-depth training with our law enforcement partners as well. We also see this as a partnership with the Department of Public Safety and Standards and Training, or DPSST, would also be a major player as part of this designation. We have an opportunity with the vacancy of our security supervisor to redefine the position and the duties, and that's partly what we're doing. This, as you may recall, we have an entirely new focus for our Safety and Risk Management Services Department. In fact, we're four years into a reorganization that we believed was very necessary to increase the safety and security across the district. This turnover, the vacancy that we were presented with, gives us an opportunity as an administration to rethink what would be necessary to take our department to the next level and provide additional safety and security for the district. So that's kind of the why behind this, and it's really because of an opportunity that we have and a path that we've been on for the past four years of improving our safety and security posture. The way that we've defined the new security manager position, it would be a certified police officer, and we're looking for that level of talent. And partly what we would look for, we want to increase our ability internally with our security specialists, campus security specialists. It wasn't too long ago that those positions were titled campus monitors. And we do realize that there's much more involved than monitoring a campus. We actually need to build a professional set of skills in that workforce. We have about 36 employees that are primarily assigned to secondary level, and we've been, internally, we've been talking for about two years how to build that professionalism in the workforce, and we believe that this is a step in that direction. And so, we also know that we have quite a few lockdowns throughout the year, and I think this year, with increased communication, you're aware of those as well. And so, some of those lockdowns happen at the worst possible time as far as the school day is concerned, either at the beginning of the day or at the end of the school day. And in fact, we have an emergency operations center that we're pretty proud of, but needs, we know that we can always improve. But there was one, just one quick example of how the EOC kicked in, and working with law enforcement is really important. There was a lockdown with two schools that rapidly turned into four schools right at release time last year, that ultimately affected over 3,500 students in this district. So it isn't, a lockdown isn't just a localized event anymore. A lockdown can be a district-wide event, and having that level of resourcing in this department would be incredibly helpful as we move forward. We also think that we're implementing the incident command structure as part of our emergency operations center, and so that would be a skill set that we would expect this person to bring into the district and to help professionalize with our workforce as well. And also, training our school resource officers. There used to be SRO courses years ago, and now there really aren't. And so, it's on us, it's incumbent upon us as a district to develop those courses so that we can help build the relationships that our SROs need to have in our schools. Because the reason that an SRO there is there is to build relationships and build trust within the school community. And we really believe that's the way to go, and that this position can help take us there. We've also listed out the supporting ORS that gives the school board the authority to do this. We wanted to let you know that we're not breaking new ground in this area as far as the state's concerned. Portland Public, Hillsborough, and Beaverton have already gone in this direction. This is not creating a police force. We have no intention to do that. We've met with the chiefs and sheriffs, and we've had those conversations. Superintendent Perry brought that forum together. And that's never been the intention and won't be the intention of this. This is, we're talking about one position that's dedicated as a sworn officer that would give us the opportunity to actually access greater background check information on this. If you look at the resolution on the second page, this is where you can see there's room for the board, and we can, as Superintendent Perry said, we'll have communication and with other groups. We can bring verbiage back into the boardroom that clearly defines the role of this police officer, what this person can and cannot do in their role. And we would put it in this resolution, so that you, as a board, have complete control over the duties of this police officer within the district. And so, we bring this to you tonight to begin the conversation as a first reading, and then recommendation and adoption would be at the next meeting if that timeline works. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Marty? I have more than one. I don't know the particular circumstances, but I know that Nevada tried to police school force, school police force, and it was a disaster. Again, I don't know what the circumstances of that were. I probably could find out. So obviously, in the, there is no limitation listed as to one person. I mean, the way it's written, it could be multiple, and I'm very concerned about a police force. I'm all for DPSST-trained, armed, certified, security people. I'm all for that, for the protection of our kids. But I get a little concerned with a police officer who has access to LEDs and CGS, whether or not, where's the oversight? In a police department, there's oversight. I'll bet the chief of police can see what their officers have been doing or not doing. Where is that oversight? If the boss of the police officer doesn't have access to LEDs or CGS, where is that oversight? And so, I'm really concerned about that. So I'm wondering why not a DPSST armed, trained person, or maybe a retired officer, who didn't want to keep the current status of being a police officer? Why aren't we going that direction? So I have a lot of, a lot of concerns that this could be blown into something else.
Other board members have questions? Jessie?
Yeah, sure. Well, I think especially when we're, when we're talking about sending, having a police officer in our schools, one thing that happens with a lot of kids is, of course, that can be kind of intimidating. So, especially to students. And so, I was wondering what the district plans to do to ensure that there's a good relationship between the officer and students, and what they're trying to do to, I guess, make sure that there's not, because when you say police force, of course, when we're talking about schools, that sounds, that could sound intimidating to families, you know? And so, I was just wondering what the plan is to do to build a relationship between officers and students.
So are you talking about school resource officers, our SROs that we already have in schools, our secondary schools? Or this position? This position specifically? This position is, you wouldn't know by looking at this position that it would be a sworn police officer. This is a security manager, has the background of a police officer, has the skill set of a police officer, but isn't walking around in a uniform. We don't envision that at all. And really needs to be the liaison between the school resource officers and our administration as well. And so, we have, as you can imagine, operational issues with our SRO contracts throughout the year. This person would be the primary interface with those. And also, working to professionalize our security specialists that are at our secondary level. We really think that that's the next phase of improving our security posture into the state. future, is building that professional skill set within our own workforce.
Sharon?
Okay. So, I also have a couple of questions, starting with one of the requirements is board members applying the equity lens that we committed to. So, I guess, questions about how the equity lens was applied to this, because obviously there are some concerns and maybe some uncertainties. So, kind of walking through some of the equity lens questions that we apply might be helpful to us and to the public. So, questions to the effect of, it's worded to the board, but to the district, considering the impact of proposed changes to underserve diverse and marginalized populations of our students. So, questions like that, because again, obviously, there are some concerns. So, if you could kind of walk us through how the equity lens was applied and what the conclusions are.
Let me start that, I'll premise that with, this wasn't necessarily run directly through the equity lens. And I do think that we're at a point where that's the necessary step. And I think the superintendent has stated that the next level of conversation is really to move back a bit, take a look at this for what we had intended to do as a district, and the benefit that we see in moving in this direction, and then make sure that there's a full understanding about what the impacts might be or what the concerns are, given this recommendation. Because remember, this is a first reading and a recommendation. There's no decision at this point.
I do have a couple more.
Yes. So, thank you, and I do want to make sure, because you, it was suggested that we vote on this the next time we meet, so I want to make sure that we have enough time for the public to provide comment outside of this setting, in addition to this setting, for us to get that information, for us to take a little closer look, because this was new to us as well. So, being able to look at, you know, the pros and the cons of other districts that have applied this, so we know Beaverton, Hillsborough, Portland, who now has shifted back to Portland Police, I believe. So, just giving us, making sure that we have enough time to consider all of the input from the community. I do have a couple of other questions. One of the concerns that has been raised by some of the larger districts that have implemented it is the risk to the district, taking on additional risk, liability, because now you have a sworn police officer who has the ability to conduct investigations, do certain things that maybe our current model doesn't have the ability to do. So, what is the risk mitigation, the risk assessment?
Sure. Great question. We actually talked to our insurance brokers, Brown and Brown, about do we have adequate insurance coverage for this type of position? And we do. They didn't recommend any additional coverage. Having said that, the board is in the position to limit the duties and scope of work. So, like, for instance, regardless of the level of risk, which there is an additional risk over and above what we're already covered for in our liability, but if you had mentioned investigations, if that's not a role that you see in this position, then you're in charge, and it won't be part of this position.
I am sorry. Go ahead. Because, you know, I had a list, and I had emailed them to Mike, but I think there, a couple of these are good for public to hear as well. Kind of the level of this position, some of the districts are using a police chief, which puts them in an entire different bracket and level. So, getting into kind of the pragmatic piece of this, the compensation and the PERS, and actually, somebody who would be designated as a law enforcement agent, I believe, would fall under the PERS compensation of law enforcement and fire. So, again, you know, an entire different level. So, just thinking about that, but I think those were the biggies.
Okay.
Marty?
So, you know, this person is a security manager, you know, I wonder would they ever be asked to do something that normally you'd only want a sworn officer, active sworn officer to do, like arrest somebody? Could there be some sort of investigation that should go to the police department and doesn't for some reason? And, yeah, I'm just concerned about the fact that we can't really provide oversight for Leds and CGS access.
Okay.
Paul, you've been waiting?
I have. I would like to know how much we anticipate this would cost and where it would come in out of the budget to pay for it. Great question. We, so, we're moving this from a supervisor to a manager position. There was existing unused funds in this budget, so there's no budget impact as far as making that movement. Although, there is a liability, as Sharon had managed, this is a different PERS level of benefit, so there'd be a long-term liability with this position that we currently don't have, because it would fall into the police firefighter's pension.
And it'll cost?
Ultimately. Yeah, we, yeah.
No, how much are we, what are we going to pay in salary?
The actual?
And benefits, or what, give me a ballpark.
I don't have that number, but we can get it for you, absolutely.
Please. We'll have that in the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Jesse?
To go along with that, I just wanted, because I know you kind of said it, but I wanted like a concrete answer. So, between now and like the next board meeting, are we going to get something where it shows the questions from the equity lens, kind of walk us through, and for the public to see, to walk through the questions and how it applies?
Yes. I think that that's, I think that's a great focus, and even though it's adopted by the board, it's always a good reminder for staff that that's where our thinking needs to start. And so, we're always open to making sure that we do that at whatever point in the process. We'd like to do it in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
The first question was, I'm sorry, Director Haynes, sorry if I got your name wrong, but the question about oversight, and we will oversee this for a minute, if I may.
The purpose isn't for us to solve things right this minute, so we will spend this time till the next reading, making a concrete list for you of how we will deal with that. So, if you'll be patient, we will do. Is your name on the list?
No, I just want to make it clear, it was one of the board members who asked the question.
Right, right. And we appreciate the question, because that tells us what kind of questions we need to answer on the list, and I'm sure we'll have some more when everyone has a chance to respond. The next item we have is reports, and I'm turning this over to the superintendent. The first job of the school board is to evaluate the superintendent over time, and as a result, we've developed 12 different ways that we intend to do that, that we can gather data on. So, this is what she will handle.
All right. So, I went ahead and put in both EL 1 and EL 2 in your packet tonight, since EL 2 actually should be the first thing you do in July. So, executive limitation 1, this is the first of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 2018-19, and is designed to provide the school board with information to determine if I'm meeting the criteria established within the adopted resolutions. So, the first area is around my global executive constraint, and accordingly, the superintendent shall not fail to set expectations around acceptable business and professional ethics. And I listed the way we do this internally with our reporting, and I want to call your attention, most of this is similar to what we've done in the past. Last year, we had some changes to our mandatory reporting, but this year, the training focus, we are really looking at a training focus on preventing and responding to sexual abuse of minors. That's a really important issue in our community, and we think it's been a matter of time since we've done that. So, that's one of our training components this year that we're heightening a little bit, so I want to make you aware of that. Haven't started it yet, but will be this year. The next item is establishing and maintaining policies and procedures to ensure organizational compliance with applicable federal and state laws. And again, we have a number of audits. We have our external auditor, we are audited by Oregon Department of Education, we also do our quality assurance work, and then we use our guidance from a number of experts to be sure we're in line with our fiscal compliance. As you know, through the budget process, we're getting better and better at our fiscal monitoring because of our automation of our budget system. And then, third is implementation of reasonable processes to address employee actions that do not meet expectations or adhere to legal requirements. We do have a requirement to report to TSPC on our licensed employees, that's mine alone. I don't, while our human resources department does investigations and discipline, I am sure that I see every single TSPC report that the district puts in. We also regularly meet with our licensed and classified associations. They are great if we've misstepped anywhere in our processes with employees to be sure that they let us know that, so we meet with them regularly. And then, we also do annual employee training, or training for our administrators around our human resource procedures. So, with that, that is my report, and I'll open it up for questions before I move on to EL 2.
Any board questions?
Superintendent, can you clarify, under item number 3, the first bullet, reporting legal and ethical violations of licensed staff? What is, what's the difference between a reportable violation and?
So, I'm going to look at John for a minute. Reportable violation, so extreme would be sexual misconduct would be extreme, reportable violation. All the time, we have employees make mistakes that might not fall under the ethical violation, but an ethical violation might be intentional changing of grades, trying to think what else. Usually, it's conduct with students, any physical conduct with students. So, it's pretty egregious things, even though sometimes the report to TSPC is not always a term, event that you would terminate the employee. So, it's, termination is, in some ways, a bit higher of a standard. TSPC has a really good way of kind of triaging the issues and deciding, so we follow the same process, which is when in doubt, report, that we do for our mandatory reporting.
So, there's, TSPC has administrative rules, and those divide reportable offenses into gross misconduct and gross unfitness. And there's 20-some categories, you've hit many of them, but it is those particular categories that are reportable. Inappropriate contact with kids, falsifying documents, stealing money, the things you would think you could get in trouble for. But it's a finite list in one of these two categories, and of that list, there are a number of them that are reportable by the superintendent.
Just so everyone here that's come to listen tonight, we're going to try not to leave you wondering what we're talking about. So, TSPC is the Teacher Standard and Practices Commission. And so, that's where a teacher under a serious questionable thing, that's the one that these go to, and it's possible to lose your license and be unable to teach, just so you have that to go on. Chuck?
That, the first bullet under number 3 caught my eye, too, and I know you don't have exact numbers, but I'm just wondering how, about how many of these incidents occur during a year? How common is this, that you have to report a gross violation of these standards? Twice a year? 200 times?
Not 200. Zero to five. Seven in a really big year.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon?
Well, I was just going to say, maybe to clarify, we're reporting, we're not doing the investigation, so that's up to TSPC. So, we're just reporting the violation.
Right. Let's have a general consensus with how this motion is written, how this item is written. Paul?
I can't support it.
Anyone else? It looks like everyone else is in favor of it.
All right. Let me go on to executive limitation number 2. This is the second monitoring report. This deals with emergency superintendent succession, and so I think it's important to point that out each year. In my absence, or if I was in some way unable to run the district, the person that could act as the superintendent is Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, so he would act as a superintendent should the need arise. But I just want to remind you that in any sort of an event, you have a team for a large district. So, John Bate is the Executive Director of HR, Mike Wolfe is the Chief Operations Officer, and Linda Myers as the Director of Strategic Initiatives, all have the ability to run the district in my absence, or if I wasn't able. And I want to remind you also that if you had to make that sort of a decision, you'd also want to refer to one of our policies, which is HUMA 013 around relationships, so that you were sure that nobody was supervising somebody that was they were related to.
Chuck?
You know, I understand this is for the superintendent succession, but for example, for the people you just mentioned, is there a succession plan in place if the CFO was unable to do his or her work?
Yeah. One of the benefits is that we have a team. So, right now, for example, the Director of Strategic Initiatives is out, and I would say that for the most part, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle and I are picking up those responsibilities. If it were Mike's absence, it would be between a couple of us. I, especially the budget part of it, I'm really involved in that, so I would pick up those pieces, and then we would, there's the Director of Finance in the Budget Office that knows a lot of the other budget pieces, so.
Is that written someplace, or is that just kind of how we would handle it?
It's how we would handle it, but I could write it if you thought that would be helpful.
We do have an organizational.
We have the organizational chart, but it might be good for, at least, board leadership each year to know kind of what the, how you would handle it if.
Yeah.
Good. I think that's a good positive recommendation. We have one more item on reports.
This one, you need a thumbs up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that. General consensus on that second issue, the emergency superintendent succession? All consent to that, all agree. The one other issue under reports is the boundary change process.
Okay, good evening again. So, as, we're going to talk a little bit about where we are in the process that's related to the bond. So, as identified in the district's long-range facility plan, we're all aware that student enrollment projections are, will increase over time, over the next 10 years, and we have a construction schedule that is designed to meet those future population, student population increases over the next 5, 10, and 15 years. And so, what's important for us now as a district is to take a look at making sure that we begin to review the current existing boundaries within the district, and make sure that we can align our projected student enrollment population with where the existing capacity will be in the next 10-plus years. And so, part of that, as we had talked about with expanding the high schools to 2,200, which was a central feature of the bond, we know that our largest high school feeder system is McKay, and it has, that feeder system has more elementary schools than any other feeder system in the district. So, clearly, we need to take a hard look at the boundaries within each feeder system and take a look at how each feeder system is currently configured. And so, that's where we're about ready to initiate a process, which would be the boundary review process. I want to give you a high-level overview of where we're going at this point. And so, we have a process that's basically three phases, starts this month, in July, and will continue through February of 2019 with a board approval of a comprehensive boundary change package for the district. So, in the July-August timeframe, you can see that we have an internal staff team that's conducting analysis. We'll get into a little more. We'll get into a little more detail of what that looks like. And then, September through December, we'll have a boundary review task force, very similar to the facilities task force process that we went through with the bond. And then, we'll have a board approval in February of 2019. It's about an eight-month process that we've already initiated. The first phase is the internal staff team analysis. And we, staff have been working with Flow Analytics for close to a year. And essentially, what we're, what we've been doing is we've been getting ready for bringing in more of the internal staff, principals and administrators, to take a hard look, just similar to how we approached the long-range facility plan. And so, we, we're using Portland State University's Population Research Center forecast. Remember, we started those forecasts back in 2015. We updated them in 2016. Flow has been under contract. We've been using yearly updated projections to stay on top of it, because the last thing we'd want to do is make decisions based on projections that were two or three years old. We want to stay with the current enrollment and then future projections. So, that's part of the internal process. So, we want to use the most current data, which we are. And again, this, as opposed to the previous conversation, we have guiding principles, and the Equity Lens is one of our guiding documents, as far as how to move forward with, with this process. Just to give you an example of what some of the guiding principles are, at this point, we have, the district has gone through boundary changes in the past, and we've used guiding principles. We've aligned them with the current Equity Lens, and that's part of our conversation as we move forward with the task force, to make sure that, in fact, we haven't missed anything. But just to give you a flavor of some of the guiding principles that we're talking about is, we want to, to the greatest extent possible, allow adequate room for required programs and anticipated growth with each school's capacity and throughout the district. We want to ensure access to equitable educational opportunities. We want to ensure student safety to and from school. We want to provide continuity in school assignments for students, families and schools. We want to ensure affected community members are involved in the process and represent ethic, ethnic and social economic diversity. And we want to consider the impact to established neighborhoods. Just to give you an idea of kind of where the guiding principles would help in the decision-making process. We want to align with the 2018 general obligation bond. In other words, we've staged the construction schedule over five years to create the capacity in the schools that we know we'll need in the next five years. So, the boundary change helps with the implementation of the overall bond. In other words, we're building the capacity, and we're also looking to change the boundaries where needed, to be able to take advantage of the additional capacity. We're also taking a look at the special education programmatic changes. During the bond process, we talked about adding special education capacity at our high schools. With the boundary review process, it gives us an opportunity to move that concept through implementation at all levels, K-12, much sooner. In other words, we're looking at where our students with special needs, where the shifts in boundaries would make the most sense for them as well. And so, we think that we can weave all of this into a very comprehensive boundary change decision package for the board. And of course, part of that would be developing the community engagement plan as well. Just a reminder, the high schools' construction schedule, the first two are McNary and North, scheduled to begin in 2019, followed by McKay and South to begin in 2020, and then West and Sprague in 2021. So, you can see that over the next three years, three or four years, we've got a very aggressive schedule of building capacity, and we'll need the boundary change process to help with that implementation as well. The boundary review task force, we see that starting in September and going through December. And part of the charge, these are elements that we would see in a potential charge for that group, is a review of the staff analysis, very similar to the facilities task force reviewing the long-range facility plan. There would be an initial boundary change scenario that this task force would start with. We'd have updated enrollment projections, and of course, like I had mentioned, the special education programmatic changes, the guiding principles and Equity Lens, the alignment of the 2018 bond, community engagement and parent survey. That's also a feature of this process, is to actually reach out to the affected communities, specifically the parents. And also, again, as I mentioned, we'd like to, and this can change during the process, but at least the, the intent is to create a comprehensive package of boundary changes for the district. We, we know that this is not an easy proposition. And we also know with, from past experience, when we opened up two new schools in West Salem, Straub Middle School and Calipoya Elementary, and then had to come back in three years later and do the boundary change process again, it's not our intent. We want to make sure that, to the best of our ability and the community's ability, is to try and get this right, as right as we can the first time. We'd like to not have to go back into any community within three years and have the conversation again. So, that's one of our, our outcomes, expected outcomes as we move forward. Board approval in February, which means first reading would be in January. The reason that we have February as the approval for the boundary changes is because we're looking at a fall of 2019 for the implementation of the changes, which means, for staffing purposes, for that next school year, fall of 19, these decisions need to be made in February, so that any staffing implications can be taken into account as we move forward. This is consistent with how the district has made other boundary change decisions, is the February timeframe is kind of the, the last point as we head forward. Again, we want to make sure that we've aligned with the 2018 construction schedule, to the greatest extent possible, and that we're addressing the special education programmatic needs as well. This is a really high-level overview of the process. We'll bring back more information for the district, for the board. But one of the things that we would like to be able to do is create the task force that reports to the superintendent, and it's very similar to how we worked the long-range facility plan and the facilities task force. So, we think that that was a successful model, and we'd like to replicate it in this process as well, which means the recommendations would be presented in a board meeting to the superintendent in December. And then, we would have first reading in January, and then, decision in February of 19. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Board questions? Chuck?
Yeah, Mike, who's, who's on the, the internal staff team that starts this process? I mean, who's?
Right. Yeah, specifically?
Who is it?
Yeah. I'm leading that, from a technical standpoint, very similar to the long-range facility plan. So, we have Dave Hughes with Flow, we have David Friedenmaker. It's been kind of a technical effort at this point. We're at the point where we're, we're expanding that to include level directors, affected principals. And so, we're looking to expand that in July and August and get ready for the initiation of the task force in September.
And then, who makes a decision on the task force in December? I mean, if people wanted to be on that, how would they go about becoming a member of that?
We'll either do some sort of a community outreach, which I'm going to guess Lillian's going to help us with, and then make some decisions from there. But we'll also do some invites, because we want to be sure that we're inviting the right people that represent those communities, where we might see some of the bigger boundary changes to the table in those task force.
I just might recommend, I don't know if it's appropriate, not to have a member of the school board on some of these to buy, for buy-in purposes, even as early as the internal staff team, just so that you've got somebody on the board who's been involved with that process that can lower anxiety levels or whatever.
That's a great idea, Chuck.
I agree. I need a general consensus on the process for the boundary change.
I just have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim?
I want to make sure that, as we put that task force together across the district, and I probably don't need to tell the superintendent this, but I want to make sure we do, it's not only the populations of the schools that are going to be impacted, but the populations of programs that may be impacted as well. So, students on an IEP, parents impacted by that, our communities of color across our, I don't want just, you know, a McNary parent. I want the different types of communities of students that attend McNary involved in those. And I know that's your intent. I just want to make sure, for the audience and for folks who may be watching on TV, it's not just going to be a parent from Holman, a parent from Gubser, a parent from Kaiser. We're going to look at the communities within those schools that would be impacted to be part of this task force.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. We need a consensus. That's a thumbs up or thumbs down on the process. We have full consensus. We'll move on to the information items. The board meeting and budget meeting calendar for the next year is attached, attached to the packet that you picked up, and it will tell you the, the board meeting dates coming or the work session dates. And of course, it's, can be changed if things change and we need more time. We're now at the public comment that you've been waiting for, and I have a sheet here. We didn't mention before, when we talked about this, we have made things, I think, a little user, a little more user-friendly. We've taken out the green light, the yellow light, the red light. You do get a yellow light, so that means it's time you need to start winding down a little bit. We want to thank you after your presentation, and I want you to know that you are listened to. We aren't in a position to make decisions on what you say right now, but it's important that you give us the feedback, and we will make decisions on those. And you will have a, an opportunity to comment next time on those suggestions. So, I'll call you in order, and I'll call, I think, the next follow-up each time, since there are a lot of people looking for this. First is Pete Teller. And next will be Alex Buron. Buron?
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Goss, and Vice Chair Blasi, and Board Directors. My name is Pete Teller. I live at 1465 Evergreen Avenue Northeast here in Salem, and I'm speaking to the first reading, reading of Resolution Number 201810-1 to be presented to the school board tonight. I brought with me a copy of the National Model for Student Safety: Assessing Student Threats, a Handbook for Implementing the SAILIM-Kaiser System, edited by John Van Driel. It was my honor and privilege to have been part of the early introduction of the Student Threat Assessment Team as a qualified mental health professional with Marion County Children's Mental Health, now known as Children's Behavioral Health. A major component of the Salem-Kaiser system was the formation of a multidisciplinary team composed of key community stakeholders who are able to share information through a collaborative memorandum of understanding. This collaboration has served both the district and community remarkably well over the years, which is why I'm questioning the move to make our Safety and Risk Department a law enforcement agency. Since the Stat-Mus, multidisciplinary team already has access to privileged information, is this move a duplication of services? Furthermore, I question this move, given the historical progression of school policing in this country. School resource officers have been in school since the 1950s, when they were first introduced in Flint, Michigan. Since that time, school policing has followed trends in criminal justice that brought us the broken window theory, zero tolerance policy, stop and frisk, and the criminalization of student conduct, all of which have contributed, contributed to what we now call the school-to-prison pipeline. Given the resolution before the school board, what assurances are there that this move will not perpetuate these past dysfunctions in law enforcement and school policing? Now, with the potential trend of arming teachers, this resolution might possibly be the gateway to another disastrous practice that would put our community and students in real danger. I also question the timing of this resolution and if the Equity Lens is being used to vet the proposal. We are currently coping with a huge divide and distrust of law enforcement, and yet we are considering embedding law enforcement even further into the educational process, whose vision is all students graduate and are prepared for a successful life. With a cloud hanging over our student, with a cloud hanging over our communities of color in regard to federal law enforcement practices, are we really sure we want to do this? I cannot help but wonder whether, I cannot help but wonder if this move is really what the student movement never again has in mind to reduce or prevent gun violence. This evening, I would request that the school board take a moment and postpone your decision on this resolution until a series of listening sessions can be organized through the Department of Student Equity Access and Advancement to determine the ramifications and possible unintended consequences of what a serious decision like this might produce and generate more public feedback, with the hope of making a more informed choice. Thank you so much for your deliberation and crucial attention to this issue.
Thank you. And we will not be making concrete decisions this evening. Just so you know, Mindy Merritt, you're next on the list. I noticed you're on the list twice. Can you combine those two, please? Thank you.
My name is Alex. I come to speak on Resolution Number 201819-1. I work at a nonprofit youth organization called Latinos Unidos Siempre that focuses on empowering youth of color. I'm also a community health worker. And one of the tools I use on a daily basis is the Maslow Pyramid of Hierarchy. This tool has allowed me to empower multiple youths of all ages and all circumstances at school. I do believe it is a very powerful tool, and I do recommend that everyone on the school board has a copy of it. But I'm also here to speak on why more police at school is a bad idea for people of color. As a youth in Salem-Kaiser School District, I know very well what it's like to go to school in this area. I know what it's like to have teachers who are not culturally proficient. I also know what it's like for teachers not to know anything about my background, other than mariachis, fancy dresses, and some type of food, which is ridiculous. A lot of our youth are criminalized simply because of the way they look, they talk, and they dress. I asked everybody on the school board to look up what subcultures are, and how some subcultures are also persecuted more than others. And combined with policing, it, the math is simple. It's simple, and anyone can do it. I leave today asking everybody on the school board, when 52% of the Salem-Kaiser School District is, are youth of color, how do we exactly apply an Equity Lens to anything when that statistic does not reflect the school board? I ask you all to think about that, and also to think about it when you guys think it's a good idea to apply more school, more police into the school. And one more thing, I heard coming into here that there was a misunderstanding. I don't believe that there's a misunderstanding on this. I believe that there is a misconnection with our community, communities of color. That is why we believe that this is no good, and it should not be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, very much. I do want to add, we changed the, the introduction, so it's not, no longer necessary to leave your address. So, if you will give your name and, the city that you live in, that's adequate. So, that'll make it a little easier.
Yes. Thank you. Board Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board, my name is Mindy Merritt, and I live in Salem, Oregon. I'm here tonight as the President of Salem-Kaiser Education Association, speaking on behalf of our 2,350 members-plus about Resolution Number 201819-1, Designating Salem-Kaiser Public Schools' Safety and Risk Management Services as a law enforcement agency. Within the Resolution 201819, the Risk and Safety Management Services clearly states, "Whereas Salem-Kaiser Public Schools' Board of Directors is committed to the safety of schools, district staff, students, property and community upon and in the vicinity of the school district premises and wants to..." and community upon and in the vicinity of the school district premises and wants to ensure that safety by designating the district's Safety and Risk Management Services Department as a law enforcement agency per ORS 332.531, law enforcement agency, semicolon, personnel as peace officers, and whereas, the district's Safety and Risk Management Services Department as a designated law enforcement agency is authorized in accordance with ORS 181, capital A, dot 230, to access Oregon State Police Criminal Offender Information through the law enforcement data systems, thereby increasing its ability to acquire information that will improve the overall safety and security of the district. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Salem Kaiser Public Schools' Board of Directors hereby designates the district's Safety and Risk Management Services Department as a law enforcement agency per ORS 332.531, and reaffirms its commitment to the safety of district staff, students, property, and community. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. School Board Chair, Salem Kaiser Public Schools, with the date. Earlier tonight, we had a presentation by Mr. Wolf. It sounded to me like we were talking about a position. This resolution sounds nothing like a position. This resolution is titled, "Safety and Risk Management Services as a Law Enforcement Agency." This is concerning to me, because this is not a position. Thank you.
Zoe, and I can't quite make out your name. Thank you, Zoe. And Sandra will be next, Sandra Hernandez.
Zoe Diaku, Salem. I'm here to ask the Cabinet and the Board to slow down and not rush to make a decision next month. I love the fact that you've decided today to have a community meeting before the next School Board meeting, but that can hardly be called a conversation if there isn't time for true dialogue. That would need to be over a longer period of time. Doing otherwise makes it appear you are pushing this through and don't value the input of our community around an important change such as this. As I said, it's about appearances, and we all know how important that is, but even more so about the actual impact this would have for generations to come. This is not about one position, as Mindy just mentioned, but about opening the door to many other things in the future. Saying the equity lens hasn't been applied, but we're going to take care of that in the next few weeks, is a slap in the face of the work we have tried to do in this community in recent years. I don't understand why the report focused on the need for this change due to a lack of professionalism of security staff and lack of coordination between law enforcement agencies. If that is a significant reason for this to happen, we are in a sad state of affairs. I believe that this district and the agencies it collaborates with have the ability to improve both of those things under the current hierarchy. As a teacher, I'm all for useful criminal reporting databases, but I'm not seeing the data on what gets caught by this database that we aren't currently getting with the few districts who currently have access to this other system. Before the next conversations on this topic, please give us the kind of data that you ask for teachers to give you when we are being evaluated. Another question I have is how to delineate the role of police officers as law enforcement versus educator versus counselor, and what clarification we are going to get about appropriate oversight, as has also been asked, of the ambiguity this creates for the district. The resolution states that we are being asked to become a law enforcement agency, not add another law enforcement position. One example of how this ambiguity becomes important is when issues arise about searches of students on school grounds. In the case of New Jersey versus TLO, the Supreme Court ruled that although students at school do retain Fourth Amendment rights of protection against unreasonable searches and seizures, school officials are only required to have a reasonable suspicion that a law or school rule is being violated in order to conduct a legal search. The presence of a sworn police officer complicates this issue. When conducting a search, is the school resource officer a law enforcement officer or an educator? According to current precedent, it depends on the circumstances. When school resource officers are responding to a situation as they would when on the beat in the community, they are acting in a routine response capacity, and any searches would need to meet the standard of probable cause. However, when school officers conduct searches either at the direction of or in collaboration with school personnel, they are said to be acting as educators and are therefore subject only to the reasonable suspicion standard. In practice...
Zoe, can you wrap it up quite quickly?
Happily. In practice, these distinctions are dubious and can easily open the door to circumventions of student rights. When we have a law enforcement officer as the chief of this department, how will that person guide and train the SROs and security personnel throughout the district with this conflict? Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra? And following Sandra will be Tony, Tony Villaneda.
Villaneda. Hi, my name is Sandra Hernandez, and I'm here to speak on Resolution 201819-1. Here because one of the things I've heard is equity lens. I hear that a lot. There is no equity lenses in this, but here's one thing. There can be equity lens in any policing when it comes to the schools. There's no, you can't implement equity lens when it comes to this. A few weeks ago, I attended a presentation by the National Education Association on the school-to-prison pipeline. One of the facts I heard there was that SROs are actually not better for schools. Police SROs all serve a purpose, to increase policing of youth, especially youth of color. There is a direct link between increasing SROs and arrests. This is not, this does not mean that police present in schools any better, because I heard that as well. We don't need policing in our schools. We don't need to put any money into more criminalization of youth. We need to put money into smaller classrooms, into more counselors, into more programs for kids to be able to learn in school. That's where our money should be going to. As you all saw, a lot of the youth that went up there were youth of color who knocked on doors for this last budget to be passed, for the school to have more funding. And we don't want that funding to be used to criminalize the same youth that were knocking on doors to increase the school funding. We, I want to, I want to make that clear. So, another thing I also, I forgot to say that I am also a product of the Salem Kaiser School District. I know firsthand how security in our schools is not just to keep kids safe, but it has served to criminalize and keep, keep kids in a way that makes them feel as if, as if they're going onto a pipeline to prison, rather than a pipeline to success or a pipeline to college. And as, as some people have already mentioned, that certain youth get targeted the most, and I know you all have seen that as well. I know you all know this, but I know you have never lived it. And that, that is why it's important that you listen to the kids that are most affected, that will be most affected by this decision. So I will ask you to not make this decision in the next hearing, because there's not enough time. If anything, you shouldn't, you should vote it down, because more police in our schools is not the answer. This puts students of color, students with vulnerable legal status, and their parents in danger as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have Michelle? No, I'm sorry, Tony is next, and then Michelle. That's Michelle Roland Schwartz.
My name is Tony. I am 15 years old, and I'm a survivor of the school-to-prison pipeline. I spent three years in an alternative school, Barbara Roberts Licking. Looking back, I felt like it was a bottom of the pit. It wasn't until last year I learned about the school-to-prison pipeline, and how I was directly affected on my education and future success. My sophomore year, I am attending North City High School, and I am proud that I was able to leave this bottom of the pit that is the school-to-prison pipeline. And I don't think that police is the answer, because I get targeted, targeted often just by my looks, and not just me, but my peers too.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and members of the Board. My name is Michelle Roland Schwartz, and I reside at Kaiser. I am here tonight about Resolution Number 201819-1, Designating Salem Kaiser Public Schools' Safety and Risk Management Services as a Law Enforcement Agency. As a parent and a community advocate, I am interested in how youth experience their school culture. I am interested in how youth access the resources and lack of resources that are available to them. I'm concerned about the resolution and the precedent that it sets for future young folks. I also want to point us to a document published by Oregon Student Voice, and it's important that I state I am not here to speak for youth. I think that they can speak for themselves, so I defer to our, our youth leaders in the room and our youth leaders in our community. In the Oregon Student Voice report, the state of our schools, access to mental health services, access to education, violence prevention education, access to resources that address things like implicit bias, racism, sexism, homophobia, et cetera, is one of those primary issues that young folks are stating that they want more access to, and cultural change and cultural shifts in their communities. And so if we're talking about funding and resources, that's what I want us to have a conversation about, is how we shift our culture within our schools and our communities to increase safety, not increase public, public safety through law enforcement agency. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Adriana Miranda.
Board Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and members of the Board, my name's Adriana Miranda, and I reside in Salem, Oregon. I am here tonight about Resolution Number 201819-1, Designating Salem Kaiser Public Schools' Safety and Risk Management Services as a Law Enforcement Agency. As a parent, a community advocate, and a community leader, investing school funds in law enforcement in this capacity is not the solution. I want to echo the concerns of the peers that have gone before me, and I won't take up too much of your time. But I also want, would like to voice my concerns as to why a resolution like this would be added to the agenda last minute that hasn't been vetted through an equity lens prior. You've heard from community members and students as to why a resolution like this would impact majorly our communities of color. And in a district where we serve over half of its, where half of its students are students of color, I urge you to reconsider this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Aurora. Next is Audrey Von... Malusia? I'm much of, here she comes. And following Audrey, we have Marilyn Williams.
All right. Board Chair Goss, Vice Chair Blasi, Superintendent Perry, and members of the Board, my name is Audrey Von Maluski. I live in northeast Salem. I'm here tonight about Resolution 201819-1. As a teacher at Adam Stevens Middle School, I'm here because of my students. It is July. They are 13. They can't drive here to advocate for themselves last minute, so here I am. I have many concerns about the designation of Salem Kaiser Public Schools as a law enforcement agency. I do agree that the security in our schools needs more training and support. They do. But I question the professional set of skills that a person in this position is going to bring. And I'm very, very concerned that the students most vulnerable to police abuse, students of color, students living in poverty, students with disabilities, and their families, are going to face even more obstacles to accessing an equitable education if the presence and influence of law enforcement in our district is increased. Our district, and my school especially, advocate for shutting down the school-to-prison pipeline. We advocate for equity for all students and restorative justice and other best practices. But this resolution is at odds with that. I'm also gravely concerned about the potential for collaboration with state and federal law enforcement, especially if the regressive Measure 105 does pass in November. That is the sanctuary law, and I am very concerned about the connections between our school district, the privacy rights of our students and their families, and the potential for collaboration. You talk about intention, but how do we make the boundary between your intentions in this document clear and the reality? My students and their families should be able to attend and visit our school without fear. Most importantly, and I would ask everyone to keep this in mind, an equity lens is not a hoop to jump through. It should be your mindset from the beginning, and it should be a way of life for everyone seeking to influence our district. Thank you.
Marilyn Williams, and then we'll have Aurora Sadeo.
To Superintendent Kristi Perry, to Chairperson Kathy Gross, and to Assistant Chairperson Sharon Babassi, I am here today as a member of the community and as a member of the NAACP to speak on the possible resolution for the district to become a law enforcement agency in response to hiring a person to replace Reg Byrd. I have some real concerns regarding this resolution for the district, and it seems to me, instead of eliminating racial disparities in the school discipline, it will only widen the gap of African Americans, Hispanics, and all students of color, along with underserved white students becoming disenfranchised with completing school. In a district that the majority of the students are minority, and while white teachers are the majority of the workforce in elementary and secondary, few students see a reflection of themselves, will once again create a hostile learning environment that will cause students to lose interest in learning and drive up the dropout and absenteeism with this new policy. Removing the nullification of parents, eliminating due process, et cetera, will only cause the breakdown of trust and the hard work that this board strives to bring in diversity of people in the schools and in the community. To work so hard to bring in diversity and inclusion training and education for the teachers, administration staff, and educational assistants will fall on the wayside. When old-biased habits are allowed to continue in the discipline area of students, it will be the students of color, special education, and immigrant students who will suffer the most. Already in many of our schools, the discipline ratio among students of color and special education are high. ICE is looking for any loophole that they can use against students and their parents. Therefore, the School Board needs to ensure its diversity and inclusion training of all teachers, administrators, staff, and school resource officers, and security officers are trained when performing disciplinary, counseling, and other management functions. Do not unconsciously favor those students perceived to be most liked them- Do not unconsciously favor those students perceived to be most like themselves in race, class, and values. Diversity and inclusion training is culturally relevant and consciously working to develop commonalities with all students and ensure that there are no racial barriers to learning, retention, promotion, and avoidance of discipline. Research has shown that the racial disparities in school discipline are caused by harmful racial biases and stereotypes in the classroom and implicit bias unconscious stereotypes of people by race, which results in having lower expectations in academic classroom behavior and overall success for students of color compared to white students. With that being said, the person that the district is planning to hire should not be allowed to switch from being a law enforcement officer to become an administrator. This would intentionally allow the person to conduct activities such as searches and seizures, stop and frisk, or interrogate as administrators, thereby allowing the use of evidence collected against a student and the student would be unable to defend him or herself, which is a violation of their constitutional rights and the rights of their parents. I am not against discipline for students, but what I am against is another form of school policy that increase the school to pipeline, prison pipeline, and increase as a disguise of being safe. It is not safe when you don't use the proper blinds and look at the proper procedures for all people. Thank you.
My name's Aurora Sedeo and I'm a retired OEA member and proud of it. And thank you each and every one of you in the board for having this opportunity to hear from the community. I am also a member of Latinos in Action, a small group of Latina retired Salem Kaiser teachers working with community and support systems to help our parents. We have a big issue with this because we know what works. We know how safety happens and that is when you have true communication and engagement with parents, community members, students, and staff. Not by hiring more police officers or include the law into communities that don't understand the simple school procedures. How can they understand the law in education? We have stories from parents that feel like before they can go into some of our schools, they have to go through a process of interrogation. Why are you here? Being followed into our offices and not being able to understand what's going on. We have some of our students that get involved in some activities that causes them to be engaged with our security staff and sometimes police officers in the schools. And parents don't understand the language of the process. And many times, the translators feel like they're engaged with the school, not the parent. So, we need less police officers, less cops, and more counselors. We need social workers. We need bilingual staff. And I am really applauding you for having that celebration last Friday where we are increasing our staff. And that's one area that we need. We don't need police officers. We need outreach coordinators that can engage the parents, that can communicate with the parents. We need to have office staff that truly interact with our parents. Castaneda says, we need subjects, you know, science, art, music, sports, not more police officers in our schools. So, consider the voice of the community and the community members and the students and to make a more safe environment, include them, engage them, share with them, make them part of our decision staffs. Thank you very much and consider these options that we have been talking about before we go to this place. Thank you.
The last person speaking this evening is Ann Olivia. Are you still here? Yeah, there you are.
I'll skip the formalities so I don't take too long. You've heard some wonderful things and I say amen to everything. It's really amazing the facts that have been brought forth and I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to speak then to culture because in my opinion, from my background, what I see is that we have this culture in America and probably other countries too where we have this militarization culture where everything is about the punishment, you know? There's, we have to discipline with punishment. Meanwhile, we're doing these brand new things, you know, that parent, we're teaching parents how not to see kids that way. Well, we don't teach our teachers how not to see kids that way. I don't mean we don't teach them at all, but they're not taught professionally in college. They're not taught the proper way to not punish children ever, like ever, right? And so, there's so much language in our culture every day about, for example, I've heard kids that are in trouble be called offenders. And then if they're always doing the same, getting in trouble again. Like, I've got a kid that gets in trouble for the same thing every single day at home, but I don't criminalize her because she's my kid, right? But if she's a student in a school, do I see her as a, like an outsider, I don't know, this group mentality that we have an offender on our hands that keeps repeating the offense, therefore must be brought to the next level of punishment and this leads to this and this leads to that, step one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then it's like, okay, you had enough chances. I don't know, it's just like the whole entire culture of the system. It's like we are familiar with it because we were raised that way, but it doesn't make it right. And so, it always gets much worse when you then start looking at the equity between the different cultures, races, ethnicities, languages. Then you start to really see it because, yes, in an old fashioned, all white school when, in my past, when I was a child, maybe the kid in trouble maybe wasn't criminalized. I don't know, but I mean, it might have just been the kid that was in trouble, you know? Maybe the people see him as like, you know, one of the kids, they get him in trouble. And if you get him in trouble enough, he'll learn to be good. And then we're raising him right because we want to make sure he's good when he grows up. The whole mentality is like completely different. But when you have communities of color and all the different things that have happened with anything to do with police, what you see is there's no, there's no learning. We're not guiding and learning. Police is punishment only. So, that mentality then, it just exudes, you know, it just distributes in everybody's mentality so that even our school resource officers, I mean, they have, there's those that are good and there's those that have that mentality. I've seen them just the way they think and talk about people and kids are just like a normal everyday, you know, what the heck, they gotta do ABC or else, you know, if that was my kid, he would get this, you know what I mean? And there's just not a mentality of learning and guiding. So, last thing, a couple of stories. So, these are examples, as the Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Coalition and a founding member, I've, we've done nothing but collect stories for 20 years. And I just want to, just to touch on a few, there's the security officer, more than one story where in the hallway, the kid's speaking Spanish. If the security officer doesn't like it, or a teacher, or a principal, or anybody else, they only go by the emotions. No rule that you can't speak your own language, but if they feel like, I don't like it, then my word is law. I'm the military sergeant, I said no, therefore it's no. So, they say, no, you can't speak Spanish. If the kid argues, he's in trouble. If he argues too much, he's becoming aggressive. If he gets aggressive, we might have to say, well, let's move to the next level. And I've heard, I know a person, a kid was arrested, taken downtown, parents didn't know it all because by the time the security officer got to the principal with the kid saying, but this is not right. This is, I have rights. You can't do this. It's against the Constitution. The more the kid argues, the more he's in trouble. So, then the next thing you know, we've got a famous, you know, famous, a football star who then loses 50 pounds, suffers from anxiety attacks, practically drops out of school and has to give up scholarships. And this is in 10th grade. You know what I mean? There's just one story. And one more, the kid who is now a grown woman, she wore red fingernail polish. She'd already been told you don't wear red fingernail polish because it's gang color, black and red. You can't wear red fingernail polish hair. That was Roberts. So, she wore it anyway. So, she gets sent home and she got suspended. Now, here's the deal. I happen to know two other people, discipline coach and a principal, who would have handed her a bottle of fingernail polish remover. There's a big difference there. And that's all by their own feelings. Oh, this is what I believe. Well, I think she should go home and, well, I think she should stay here and have fingernail polish remover. Where's the consistency or the, do you know what I mean? And yes, so then she felt criminalized, so then she did drop out, right? So, it just, there's got to be, and I don't feel that any type of law enforcement agency or policeman of any type of law background whatsoever, they don't learn psychology, they don't have parenting, they don't have all kinds of skills that you would need to do this kind of assessment. I'm really going overtime, aren't I? Okay, thank you very, very much. I know you know what I'm talking about, but think hard about that. Thank you.
We need to finish up a few more pieces of business. Board activity reports, can we quickly pass those by? Yes, Paul?
Anyone wanting to know what happened at SCATS today, I have the packet, so.
Thank you. Any other? Jesse?
Well, Kathy, Jim, and I all had the opportunity to go down to the OSBA conference for school boards. It was very educational. We talked about a lot of things ranging from chronic absenteeism. We talked about, we learned a little bit about charter schools or how to help homeless or foster students. So, there's a lot of things there and it was very educational and definitely worth it.
Any other comments? I'm going to kind of rush through this because we are later. Sharon?
Well, I'll be quick. So, Aurora mentioned the celebration last Friday that we, Superintendent and I attended. It was sponsored by the NAACP, the Salem Kaiser Coalition of Pastors, and our own Coalition for Equity here in Salem. And it was honoring and recognizing the promotion of teachers and administrators of color. And the thing that I appreciated, I think we got to meet each one of them, but we also got to hear from our communities about the hard work and the efforts over the last several years to really look at our hiring practices, our retention practices to promote, encourage, and do whatever we possibly can so that, like Aurora said, our teaching and our administrative staff looks more like our students. And I appreciate that that was recognized and the efforts in the district were recognized, but I so much appreciate this reception honoring the promotion of these incredible educators. So, it was a great event that I hope that we do more often to recognize that.
Good. Any other comments? Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Do you have a report?
Oh, she has a board activity. I'm sorry. I just said it was board activity. I had to business. Anyway, I just want to say I drove a bus. Nobody got hurt. I'm probably not bus driver material, but we do need more bus drivers. So, consider doing that after you retire for some fun.
Anything else, Superintendent?
All right. I was going to mention what Sharon did, so thank you. That was a great event. I'm really, really thankful for our communities that put that on, so both Coalition and the NAACP. So, thank you. And then I wanted to make a note that next Thursday night is summer graduation. Yes, it will be hot, but what we need to remember are these are students who did not get to walk at their home high school and have shown grit and determination to make it to graduation. And we put this on for them and their families in their cap and gowns from their high school. So, big deal for these kids. And I would say that it's, would, the kids who got to walk on the day of graduation had it a little bit easier than the kids who had to come back for summer school. So, we should be, being there in the hot with them and recognizing that. So, if you can come, it's a great event and our families and our kids are really happy that we do a summer graduation.
Thank you. Good. I think that wraps it up. I appreciate your patience with me and invite you back. We'll have more time. Next board meeting is August 14th and I look forward to seeing you then. And thank you for coming. We are adjourned.